Check. Go ahead and say something, Todd.
Hey, John, this is sound check. I'm shutting it back off till we're ready.
I'd like to call the meeting to order if you'll please rise. We'll say the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And would you call the roll, please?
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
This is Regola Dye.
Yes.
This is Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from September 20th.
So then?
Thank you, Mrs. Regola Dye. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any corrections? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
This is Regola Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. And I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and we'll go ahead and begin our meeting and we have commendations and communications.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. We do have a communication from Wigan Street Elementary this month and so they put together a nice YouTube video of us, of some special things that are going on at Wigan Street.
Each night, one way that our school is collaborating with Hannah Kevin, parent of two Wigan Street students, Tynique and Maddy, to strengthen students' mindsets and bodies, supporting their social, emotional learning. Hannah reached out to Mount Vernon Elementary School since July about the opportunity for her to volunteer to be partner in schools and implementing a new fitness and mindset program. So in September, we began at Wigan Street Thrive Kids and we currently have over 60 kids that attend our learning points before school. This is a great opportunity for students to also increase their learning because research shows that exercise can promote new neurons in the hippocampus, a part of the brain used for learning and memory, which can then improve their overall learning. Here is Brock Evans, a gym teacher at Wigan Street Pleasant Street, to tell us more about how Thrive Kids is affecting students at both of the schools.
I wanted to just talk real quickly about the benefits of exercise, so what we're seeing through Thrive as well as a prior program that I had done for 16 years from Larry Hall, Boys, Girls, and Jif. Some of the benefits that I saw, first off, were, one being, changes in behavior. I believe that right now, even with Thrive just starting to grow up at Pleasant Street and Wigan Street here, behavioral changes in the mornings of the kids that might be a little bit more energetic in the morning, so to speak, when they get to their class, for their morning work, they're already brought back down a little bit, they'll be able to practice on that and be able to focus a little bit more. I know in the past with Jif at Pleasant Street, Larry Hall, the benefit of exercise and morning help with behavior exists as well, first thing we learned, as teachers actually reflected on that and they even recommended it to some students to make sure that they were going. As far as academically, there's statistics everywhere about neurologically the benefits of exercise for the brain, including even MRI scans of what the brain looks like after exercise as opposed to prior exercise. So the amount of science that is there as well as even data to see what the kids are, whether it was behavioral or academic, has been pretty substantial across the nation here. And then for us here at Wigan Street Department, I'm really excited with that I've started to see now, is that the kids are taking some of the themes from Thrive, for example, I can do hard things and I can even talk about that within my class and they're answering things within my class. I created a general physical education class now, so the parallels are also going together daily every time I'm in that class. It's a program that the kids, a lot of them are around 50-plus kids. Hannah, I would say, well, Hannah Kevin was able to talk to me a little bit about it and I'm super excited because after Larry got retired, I still wanted to use something with the kids and Hannah's exploding with this nice little system.
Brock, here's Hannah to tell more about the Thrive Kids program. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katana and I'm the trainer of Thrive Kids. On that Thrive Kids, we focus on two main things. The first thing is we want to focus on helping kids be lifelong movers. So we have created a curriculum that helps to lay a foundation for movement that will help them to act in whatever activity they want, whether it's sport, whether it's exercise, whether it's an outdoor activity. Our goal is to help them be lifelong movers. Our second focus is to help them build a strong character, which means we're focused on helping them do hard things. So we focused our program, the exercises and movements we took here, we helped encourage them to do hard things. That way they can do hard things here and then they can transfer them outside of the gym. One of the ways that we help Thrive Kids do hard things is we present a challenge to them. So this session, what we have done is we have included a challenge of a jumper distance. So the kids are learning how to jump for distance. We have leveled them so that they can see where they're at and our challenge is then to help them do better. So we've done a variety of movements to help stretch their legs so that they can jump harder. And then each week, we work by pushing them and challenging them so that they can see that they actually can do the hard things. So we present a workout, we present a movement that they will try to do that could be either a challenge of heart or a challenge of body heart and we challenge them to think before they start what they're going to do when it gets hard. Her goal then is that this will then transfer to maybe math class where they see a problem and the problem is hard and instead of quitting, they say, oh, what's my plan for when this is going to get hard? And so we can transfer from here and transfer to the classroom and outside the classroom. What our main focus is at Thrive is that we want to focus on movement diversity. So what we did recently is we did a farmer's carry with our back backs. So we had our students take a back back on the ice puck and walk back and forth. What we were actually doing was strengthening their legs, but we were also creating a little bit of movement diversity because we were teaching them a movement that maybe they'll see in the future if they decide that they want to work out. And we're just introducing it to them. So we want to help kids get used to doing hard things or interesting things or different things and the farmer's carry was one of the ways that we did that. Typical back backs, what will happen is the kids will come in and they will start a some sort of warm-up. So a warm-up might be running around the gym, maybe asking to do a bear crawl, something that starts the heart rate up and gets them used to moving. After we do a warm-up, then we typically will work on some sort of mindset thing. I like to do activity with our mindset, having them move, by teaching them how they can have a world mindset within the gym and then to experience it outside. After our mindset, then we work on a skill, like I said, we do the reach out distance, we work on farmer's carry, we work on line jumps, we work on one foot jumps, so there's multiple things. Once again, to do our movement diversity, introducing kids to a bunch of different things. Then we typically will do a workout. Sometimes we'll write a partner workout, whether we're with a partner, sometimes it's a team workout where we all do it together. And in these workouts, they'll do a variety of different things. The goal here is to get their heart rate up, get them moving and then also working to strengthen their legs because we're working on a jumper distance. So they will jump the line, they will run back and forth, they will do farmer's carry, different movements in order to help them strengthen their legs. And then we like to end with some sort of game, something super quick and super fun that they can do together as a team because our goal here is to make movement fun so that they become movers for life.
Overall, we're hoping to make youth healthy lifelong movers who will see a challenge or an obstacle or a problem and instead of running away, they will look at it and say, I can do hard things.
We want to thank Hannah and Brock Evans and of course, Wigan Street, they started this program out there. They've kind of taken it to Pleasant Street. It's really an idea of incorporating physical fitness early in the morning to kind of get out the wiggles and it allows the students to kind of embrace the day. We included breakfast in there as well. It's a great start, quite frankly, to the day. So to think about 50 kiddos right now at Wigan Street who are getting there early, actually, to get that little bit of a workout, to learn some of those resilient skills, that I can do hard things, I think it's a wonderful program. So we may see this beginning to be replicated and maybe it will move on to a number of our other buildings. Any questions on the Thrive program or comments?
I'd like to comment that I see future lawn jumpers for Mount Vernon High School, track and field.
I know when they were doing the back bends there, that could have been pretty ugly for me. Thanks to those guys for doing that and that's, Wigan Street's kind of sharing with the board tonight. Next up on the agenda is some of our monthly reports. John P. Patel is our senior class president. She's also put together a video and she kind of has a little box that's in the corner here because I think she wants to kind of show us something from screencastify, so when we get this started, you'll kind of see her here in the bottom right.
My name is John Patel and I am the senior class president. Yeah, I'm going to be going over some things, so I'll let you know. Ultimately, at 6:30, we have our high school day, which is going to be juniors versus seniors and months of that are first coming. At 11:30, we have our homecoming dance, which will be at Ariel Foundation Park. This has to be the softest and least, but at least first, the USC cross-constitution page. At 12:00, at Sharmir, we have our band concert. We've recently started a jacket journal again and that can be accessed through the school website. If you click on schools and then the high school. And I mean, our school tab, you can access the jacket journal. All sports are coming to an end and winter sports are starting and tomorrow night at home, we have the voice song.
So that was a short, from John P., that was a short report of what's going on at the high school. We do have homecoming coming up, believe it or not. It's week 10 of the football season. Generally, homecoming seems to fit a little bit more in the middle, but I think because of just different circumstances, they're going to be taking homecoming outside and inside at Foundation Park. And so hopefully they have a nice night there where they can enjoy both the inside and the outside and really bring you back that jacket journal, which is kind of a journalism feature. which is kind of a journalism feature that kind of took a little sidestep for a while, and they're wanting to bring it back. So thank you to John P. for sharing.
Thank you. Darcy, I saw her come in, but she said nothing. Nothing, okay. And Mike, is Mike here this evening? Okay, thank you. And for public participation, is this on? For public participation, just a reminder that please introduce yourself and give your name and address, your full name. And then the limit will be three minutes for a total of fifteen minutes. We have five signed up, so that's perfect. And we'll begin with Linda Michaels.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Michaels. I live at two zero zero eight eight New Gambier Road. Most of you are probably familiar with the expression, freedom is not free. So what does this mean in the context of our community? And what is the price of freedom? The price of freedom is responsibility. Performing some deed without feeling responsible for what might happen, whether it goes right or wrong, and especially how it affects others, takes little courage and can be performed by someone almost without effort, since it will not trouble their conscience to any significant extent. On the other hand, it takes courage to perform a deed and to also consider how it affects others and to take responsibility for how it affects others. A deed is a performance, not an outcome. An outcome can be bad or good. In order for a deed to qualify as good, it must be performed with responsibility. And responsibility means being willing to accept the consequences of one's actions and the impact that they have on others within the community. So I ask, are you willing to do the responsible thing and get vaccinated and wear a mask indoors, among other people, in order to protect family, friends, neighbors, community members from the COVID-19 virus? Or are you not willing to do that, but are willing to accept the consequences of that decision, including taking responsibility if someone dies because of your choice? Think about it.
And Anne Steinmetz?
Anne Steinmetz, twelve forty-one Gambier Road. So now I'm going to change. I do not take responsibility, only because if you do not have control of your body, you are enslaved by definition. I will not ever let that happen. I will not let that happen to me, my family, my children, ever. Especially for a vaccination that is clearly not working. It's not working. So let's look at some stats. So let's go over this. Since we were last here, here are some things that have happened in our country. Biden restricted monoclonal antibodies to the red states, specifically Florida. Merrick Garland considers parents who speak up at the school board meetings terrorists. U.S. Treasury Secretary warns that shortages will continue until everyone gets the COVID jab as our supply chains are plummeting. Hundreds of thousands of people have entered through our border and the southern border. We have no idea what their vaccination status is. Tell me how this is keeping us safe. How are we still saying that these people have our best interests at heart? They don't. Sixty percent of the hospitalizations with Delta are breakthroughs. Breakthroughs, which means they are fully vaccinated. Two weeks after their second vaccination, sixty percent of the people who are hospitalized are qualified for that. The deaths among the vaccinated in Vermont, Israel, Gibraltar, Iceland, Scotland skyrocketing. Skyrocketing. An Ohio judge reversed an order for a dying patient to receive ivermectin in the hospital. FEMA replacements for all of the recently fired frontline workers are not required to be vaccinated. The federal government wants to track purchases over $600. A hundred and fifty humans have been pushed into extreme poverty since this started. Some hospitals want to deny care to the unvaccinated. And some portions of Germany can deny entry of unvaccinated people into grocery stores. Please tell me how these people are looking out for our best interests. They are not. And so, you know, if, my point is that, you know, if, this is clearly a political agenda. If they really wanted to help us, why did Biden stop the monoclonal antibodies to just the red states? Why is he doing that? Why are we listening to these people? The Lancet, people at The Lancet no longer use the word woman because apparently that's too offensive. You want to know the word that they use now? Body with vagina. Because they don't want to offend anyone, so they no longer want to use the word woman. These are the people who are influencing our policies right here in Knox County. And how do I know that? Because you guys are letting them. You are letting these people influence what we do right here in Knox County. We cannot listen to these people anymore. We need to stand up and do the right thing, even if you feel like you're going to be ostracized from other people for politics.
And I'll start off, continuation of the same message I've been bringing to the other school boards. And yes, we've done eight school board meetings in two and a half months. We've got two more tonight. That'll be ten in two and a half months. And we're not going away. We're going to keep coming to these school board meetings because I'm going to tell you right now, government doesn't work, and our schools are corrupt. The NEA, the teachers' union, and all of this, this is all getting to be garbage. We talk about fitness for our kids. We got cold football, we got gymnasium practice, we got stuff. Here's what we're missing in America. And I'm going to read a few of these. First one I'll start with tonight, and I'll tie these together. Matthew nineteen verse fourteen. But Jesus said, suffer the little children and forbid them not to come to me; for of such is the kingdom of heaven, and he laid hands on them and departed them. We're bringing the kids away from Jesus as we run them through these school systems of indoctrination. Then you go over to Matthew twelve, verse thirty. It says, he that is not with me is against me; and he that gathers not with me scatters abroad. We are scattering our children. We are scattering. Because we have done, though, got out of the school. We want to bring in, throw out FCA on the Thursday morning at seven AM and bring in a bunch of jumping jacks, put masks on these kids and they can't breathe as they're running around a gymnasium trying to gasp for breath. I mean, come on. This is going to build more character, not character in jumping jacks and bear crawls. I did bear crawls and jumping jacks when we coached middle school football and high school baseball. That's where we need to do it. Savage can do it in a phys ed room or whoever is there now. So you go over to Proverbs twenty-nine, verse two. When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, bears rule, the people mourn. The people are mourning in this country right now because the wicked are ruling. We have got a problem in America to where we're being overrun. The fourth one I'll use is Psalms ninety-four, verse sixteen. Here it is, listen to this one. And who, it was who, will rise up for me against the evil doers? Or who will stand up for me against the workers of inequity? We've got a lot of evil and workers of inequity in this country. We have kids, the teenage suicide rate is through the roof. These kids are turning to drugs by the droves. Forty years of Just Say No and the Dare Program, through all kinds of federal money in that programs. Drug scene's worse today, forty years later than it ever was. What you're going to have in another five to ten years is going to be worse than ever. It's coming, more and more. I was going to read some, I noticed some things on your list here tonight of things you're going to speak about. Think about, we're speaking now in the schools about blended learning. I don't know what blended learning is, but I'll find out. Weapons, student mental health and suicide prevention, student hazing, school safety, student abuse and neglect. How did these get to be topics in our schools? In the seventies and eighties, these weren't what we were dealing with. It's gone downhill. I was also going to share tonight the article of the Homosexual Manifesto written in nineteen eighty-seven. You ought to read that. Next month, I will bring you copies of it, of planned on what they're going to do in our schools, how they're going to go after our children. And this is what we do all the time. Three minutes, we move on, you're done speaking. Mr. Cedar, I would still like to meet with you. And I'd like to sit down and discuss some of these issues, have a discussion about this. If you would, that would be great. Thank you.
Dennis Swingle, I live at eleven oh one Eschusna Street, Mount Vernon. Graduated from Mount Vernon High in sixty-five. The papers that I passed out to you, I passed out two data sheets to each one of you. And they're from the FDA, the first one. The second one is from the, I'm sorry, backwards. The first one is from the FDA, or the FDA, and the other one is from the VAERS website, which are both government websites. The first one talks about since eight twenty-seven, the progress on the vaccines with reverse severe side effects or even death. And that's what I really feel is important. I realize that it's not required at this point in time or mandated that children be vaccinated. However, the government's about ready to prove from five years old on up. And unfortunately, at some time, they may mandate it for you to make a decision. If you look at that first sheet, there were six hundred and fifty thousand adverse cases that resulted from the vaccine. And thirteen thousand nine hundred people died after having the injection. There were, life-threatening cases amounted to fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven, which did not include the ones that died. And permanent disabilities amounted to eighteen thousand and ninety-eight, or yeah, eighteen thousand ninety-eight. One thing of interest is the fact that goes with this report is the fact that VAERS even themselves says that only about one to two percent of the cases are submitted that show up on this sheet paper. So this could be as many as, one million, three hundred thousand people have died from the injection. If I look forward to the problems that are occurring, and unfortunately, the people that are, it's getting it worse is the children, particularly boys that are vaccinated, are having problems with myocarditis, which is inflammation of the heart. And once you have myocarditis, the healing process is the scarring of your heart, and you never recover. You've got a heart problem for the rest of your life. The second sheet is the FDA Safety Surveillance Sheet for COVID-19 Vaccines, and it lists all of the conditions that are occurring. Guillain-Barre syndrome, transverse myelitis, encephalitis-myelitis, and cephalomyelitis, strokes. Many people are actually dying because somehow or another it destroys their white blood cells. Moving forward, so I have to say this. If you talk about the safety and effectiveness of the vaccines, I think it's really obvious that safe they are not. If we go back to several years ago, when we had a H1N1 virus, I can't remember what they called it, they had another name for it. At that point in time, the VAERS system had recorded fifty-six deaths. And at that time, they pulled the vaccine because only fifty-six people had died. And here we are, only nine months into the year, and at least it's been verified, almost fourteen thousand people died from the vaccine. It's poison.
I'm back again. Liz Boggs, Forty-Seventh Caster Drive. I'd just like to recognize that I understand the last eighteen months have been terrible. And I'm sure it's probably the hardest time that you guys have had on this board. And the pressure, I'm sure, has been immense. I can't imagine. A lot of people say they'd like to have that job, but I think it'd be very difficult because there's two sides, and it's very polarizing. And both sides have an opinion. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for giving parents the option to have the mask off their kids again, or if they want to wear them, fine. But thank you. Thanks for giving that back to the kids and working hard at that. I appreciate it. And my kids, thank you too. That's it.
Are no board items for discussion? So moving forward, we have comments at the end. And additions and deletions?
I have addition to the agenda tonight. It's all in community school student participation athletics. And that'll be noted in that section six, item B three. Under superintendent support, I do have a district update to share. A lot of it is going to surround the most recent things that have been going on within the district. So. Why it's doing that? Oh, I'm sorry, it's for that, there we go. All right, so just a quick kind of a time lapse here, just to kind of pull some of this stuff together. July and August, the district was committed to beginning of the year in a mask-optified environment, but left open the ability to transition if necessary. And then September rolled around, end of August versus September, and due to rising of positive cases and quarantine, the district transitioned to a mask-required environment through the month of December. The district followed the advice of the governor and children's hospitals, who asked us to give them four weeks. We also remained mask-required for six weeks since that September second timeline. We moved to October. We provided some guidance in October of indicators and additional considerations that were developed with consultation with a lot of different groups, and we shared those with parents. The district has closely monitored those indicators and considerations, and I just wanted to quickly preview those for you tonight. We have three primary indicators and a number of additional considerations. And the district has continued to closely monitor those three primary indicators that were outlined in an October first update. Indicator number one was COVID-positive cases and hospitalizations. We were watching that closely. And since the end of September, those have continued to decline both locally and statewide. And future trend line projections, which they give out on the website, and of course, talking to local physicians, continue to decline each week, and we're hopeful that they will continue on that decline. Indicator number two for us was new student and SAD-positive cases. We were averaging close to thirty during those primary months. And we kind of set a goal that we would like to get that down to fifteen or below. And over the course of this indicator, the past three-week timeframe, the average for new COVID cases during that three-week period was eleven per week. And so again, it was another indicator that we put out there that we are hoping to meet. I thought I would just put up this slide. It's updated as of last Friday. If you notice, all the way over here to the left, this is the start of school. And so when we started school, you could see that the cases began to rise, eight this day, seven this day, five. Then we got all the way up to seventeen on the thirtieth. And you can see as those numbers kind of continued to rise daily on September second, we made that decision to transition to a mask-required state. We said we would do it through September, and we did, and we would reevaluate it, talking to folks. But you can see from September seventh, which was our high mark, twenty-two positive cases per day, we began to slowly decline in positive cases, which is certainly something that we welcome. To the point to where you'll notice that some of these high marks here, those are traditionally Mondays. Monday has a tendency to bring not only Friday, but Saturday and Sunday. And so when you see higher numbers there, it's a result of kind of a weekend count. And when you look up Knox Public Health and you look up their daily cases, you'll notice Mondays are, they have an asterisk, and those are usually a little bit higher. you'll notice Mondays are, they have an asterisk, and those are usually a little bit higher. But you'll notice in the last three weeks, after the Monday, 4-2-1-1, start back on a Monday on October 8, we had eight cases. Then we had 0-2-2-1 last week. We had eight cases on Monday. And then we dropped to zero cases, one case, and then zero cases. And that was a big indicator for us that we wanted to continue to monitor and track. But this next slide, what I think it will project is that we made a decision back here based on current quarantine guidelines at the time. And the guidance was very simple. It came straight from ODH. And basically, anyone sitting around a student unmasked or unvaccinated was required to quarantine for 14 days, and there was no exception to that. And so when you see some of these numbers rising, and then you start to multiply that out by the number of periods in a day, and the number of buildings, it got out of control, and that's why we made that decision back here. One of our indicators, indicator number three in that October guidance, was a quarantine alternative. Since August 18, we made a request to our local state health department to reconsider the current quarantine guidelines. And we even offered an alternative at that time, that at least at that time was denied. We met with local health officials this past Friday and agreed upon an alternative that in our estimation makes common sense. And that was the idea that let's not send home healthy students for 10 to 14 days when we can add an extra component that keeps students safe, but also keeps students in school. So what is this alternative? Shared this in the parent update. You can read through the health department guidance, but I've kind of done a quick synopsis here. So going back to our small graph over here to the right. If a student here is a positive case, all right, and they have students sitting all the way around this student, all right, that's where the contact tracing for us begins. The students with the green check marks, they were wearing a mask, and so they didn't need to be contact traced any further. The students with the X, they were not wearing a mask. And in the old quarantine guidelines, they would have been quarantined for 10 to 14 days. With the alternative that we suggested on the 18th, and one that was actually accepted and agreed upon was last Friday, we now are allowing these students here two choices. And those choices are pretty simple. They can quarantine for that required 10 days, or they can opt into the quarantine alternative. And what the alternative is, is follows. Students and parents must complete an opt-in form, basically stating that we want to opt into the quarantine alternative, we've read the guidelines, and we agree to them. What are those guidelines? The students will complete a daily symptom check upon entering the building at a designated location. They'll simply sign off, and they'll say, I have no symptoms today. And those will generally be done with the health agent or health nurses there. Students will be required to wear a facial covering during the school day, with the exception of lunch and outside activities where social distancing can be maintained. The other guideline that was put in there by the health department was students will not be able to participate in extracurricular activities for seven to 10 days, depending upon testing options. Students failing to adhere to the aforementioned guidelines will lose the privilege of the quarantine alternative. So simply stated, if a student now in a mask optional state is not wearing a mask, and the student sitting next to them becomes a positive case, that child, those parents, will have a choice to keep their kids in school. But to stay in school, the health departments agreed that they would wear a mask for that required period of time. We felt like that was a much more common sense alternative than to simply send those students home. Now, parents could say, you know what, I still don't want to wear a mask. And then that is fine. They would have to then be quarantined for the current quarantine guidelines. The board have any questions on that piece there? So we've always remained hopeful that we work our way back to a mask optional environment. The indicators and considerations shared in previous updates have either been mad or are more favorable today than they were when we instituted the mask requirement on September 2. We realize there will be no singular masking decision that everyone will agree with. We will continue to encourage and welcome students and staff to wear a mask while in school. For those involved in extracurricular activities, I have said this, that it's just really important that you fully understand the new quarantine guidelines. So Mount Vernon City Schools, in that parent update on Friday, will be transitioning to a mask optional environment beginning this coming Wednesday, October 20. We chose Wednesday because we felt like we wanted to get these forms and some of this documentations and protocols in place, besides trying to just start out on a Monday. And so we've been working a little bit on that today. We'll finish up some of those things tomorrow. And we're hopeful that we won't have to ask for this alternative too often, that our case numbers stay low. I think it's, I think it's probably fair to say we'll always see some level of increase at some point in time. And we have to understand that, manage it, and mitigate it to the best of our ability. We will also say that if for some reason something would take a real drastic turn, we always reserve the right to pivot and transfer if we need to. But I really feel like we're heading down the backside of this. So anyway, that's that part of the update. I did want to share some misinformation. I heard some today, and I also have heard this throughout this cycle. The district receives extra money for making students wear masks. That's completely false. The district has never received any additional funding tied to students wearing masks. I want to be clear on that. We have gotten some funding, CARES Act funding, from both Republican and Democratic parties working through this pandemic, but we have never received one dime extra tied to making students wear a mask. And so I hope we can set that record straight. And the other one that came out is that with masks optional beginning Wednesday, students don't need to wear a mask on school transportation. That is false. We continue to have to follow those home and transportation guidelines. Students will still need to wear a mask while on public transportation. So just a couple items for misinformation. And I think it's important to put those things out there when we hear those, to make sure that we share those appropriately. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up. We put that in the update. It's the second week in November, Wednesday, November 10, and Thursday, November 11. We found out last year that having Zoom parent conference meetings became really a very productive use of our time and people traveling back and forth. So we're going to continue to advocate for those that parents want to attend conferences via Zoom. If circumstances don't allow you to participate in those Zoom or phone conferences, we will provide opportunities for in-person conferences. We'll just schedule those accordingly. Specific building information will be forthcoming. The other thing I think that's an important note here is that school safety has always been paramount. We will continue with our ALA safety drills this year. We didn't emphasize that nearly as much as we did last year during the pandemic. However, we've had the ALA system in place here in Mount Vernon for seven years, and feel like we have really been at the forefront of some of these safety drills. We're going to take a step back. We're going to kind of reintroduce this at the same time to our students. So school safety will continue to be a priority. We have a small book that we share with our elementary students. It says, "I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared." And we want to make sure that we address our elementary students in a sensitive issue in a way on this important topic. What we're going to do at the elementary levels is we will send home a notice of the exact date and time of which we'll be doing this particular safety drill at the elementary level. We will also make an announcement just prior to the drill so that they know what's coming. Because quite frankly, when we enact the ALA safety drill, you're going to hear a siren going off, and it's going to announce that the building's in lockdown. Because we didn't practice this as much last year during the pandemic, we want to make sure our students feel safe and comfortable doing it. At the high school level, we will provide our two-week window. They'll have conversations about it. We will always enact at the high school and middle school in real time. Immediately, once that siren goes off, that announces lockdown, we will announce that this is a drill. And we still want our students to go through the procedures and protocols of listening to the information that comes through, through the ALA system. We did put an ALA letter that was sent to all parents. We sent that out every year. It is on the district website, but it was also in the parent update on Friday. So that's the district update for today. Does anyone have any questions?
I would make a comment, just to say thank you for working so hard to try to navigate through these crazy times that, I mean, no matter where you fall out position-wise on masks or not to wear masks or whatever it may be, the reality of it is COVID is real. We've all had some experiences. I certainly have lost loved ones over this. But at the end of the day, we've got to get on with our lives. And I know it's very, very difficult, no matter, like I said, wherever you stand on this. But you've laid this out. Probably one of the key elements here is the transference of the responsibility back to the parents to decide whether or not they wear masks or not. That's not the teacher's decision. That's the parent's decision of what they do. And that's, that's what's been requested, but that's not necessarily what motivated us and drove us to this decision. But I applaud you, Bill, for laying it out as best you can. And from here, we can only hope and pray that everyone will be responsible. For clarity's sake, this is optional for parents and their children, and it is optional for the teachers as well, correct? Right? So the teachers need to fully understand that it is optional for them as well. So thank you for doing this. I can't think that it could be any clearer than what you've just laid out here.
We'll go ahead and move on. Under Superintendent's Business, item recommended items for board approval. We have a second reading of some board policies that are sent to us through our policy maker. And so those items are there for your approval tonight. We also have Item 2 and 3 here. Item 2 is to appoint to the Knox County Career Center Board of Education, our board member, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson has decided that after this term, he is stepping away for a little bit. Maybe we'll convince him to come back, but, but we really want to make sure that we, we value Mr. Thompson's business side of things, and he's going to work for Mount Vernon City Schools in relation to the Knox County Career Center. And then Item 3 is a home and community school student participation and athletics. Those three items for board approval tonight.
Mr. Cedar, I had a request from a board member to pull one of the policies. So when we make the motion, could we consider that?
Okay.
So, Mr. Thompson, would you like to?
I would ask that we pull Policy Number 5350, just for further examination on what the full content is of this policy. And not for discussion tonight, but as much for the opportunity just to look a little further into what this means.
Would you like to make a motion with the exception of that policy?
I would. Now, if we are lumping all these together, I guess I have to pull back on one of them too. So, right?
I move that we remove the 5350 and approve the other policies as seen and read.
And Number 2 and 3 as well?
Oh, yes. And we approve 2 and 3 also. Thank you.
Unless we should vote on that separately?
I can.
Okay.
I can. This has to be a motion that Mr. Regola-Dye put on the floor to approve Items 1, 2, and 3, with the exception of Policy 5350. She just needs a second to that, and we can vote.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Thompson cannot vote in Number 2, so.
I can, I can go ahead and amend that motion and just let's approve the policies.
Okay. Why don't you do that?
I amend the motion, and we will remove 5350, but I move that we approve the rest of the policies.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. And were there any questions on any of the policies? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay. And we can vote on the second item if I could have a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the appointment of Steve Thompson to the Career Center and Jesse Cochran as a home student participant.
And are there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I thank you for your consideration. I didn't seek this. But you all know my reasonings for, for stepping away from a job that I've been in for 12 years. And I've loved it and appreciate every one of you. But you understand my reasoning. But to continue on and fulfill my commitment to the Career Center is important, but it's not, it was something I was willing to forego. But that's very kind of you to consider that. So thank you very much.
We're grateful for your service. Thank you.
We figure if we can keep you on the hook just a little bit.
Okay, moving ahead, curriculum, and just on the student achievement success articles. So second one, I would just remind all of us that fulfilling teacher and staff vacancies is a challenge for a lot of school districts. And this article suggests creative strategies for dealing with that. The next article, the third one, and how to make outdoor teaching work is also an interesting article about what a fifth-grade teacher is doing and the challenges in various communities and how some have been overcome in order to accomplish outdoor education. So I'll just suggest that if you're interested in those two items, that you might want to read further. And moving forward, there are no other items, but we're at Fiscal Services.
Oh, sure.
Thanks. Want to open that, Mr. Cedar?
Financial report is as boilerplate, I think, as I've ever seen it. As you scroll through there for the board, if there's any questions, please let me know. Typically, we spend the bulk of our time on this sheet. The only thing I will point out is our state foundation funds. Initially, we expected to have a better idea of how those were going to operate this year, this month, in October. That has been postponed. So you're not seeing much in terms of changes in terms of our state foundation funding. We hope to have additional information come December. So there could be a true-up, we're hoping. And all the projections that I'm seeing, we will see a slight increase in state funding. So that'll be good for the district. Nothing else in terms of this page. If you'll keep scrolling, Mr. Cedar, did see a little bit of an improvement in our investments, not near what it's been in the past, but a little bit. And if you continue to scroll, I know that's sideways, but we'll go one more page when the board has a chance. And with the approval of the insurance committee, we did invest some of our insurance funds. We are self-insured in this district. We pay an administrator to oversee it. And we are starting to see some modest gain. So hopefully, that was a good thing, and we'll continue to bear fruit for our insurance fund and save our employees and the district some money. I do have a resolution there regarding what they sometimes call cafeteria plans or Section 125 plans. And what this allows us to do is pre-tax benefits for our employees, like their health insurance, or if they would purchase an alternative plan, be it a cancer plan or something like that through a vendor. This gives us the authority. The district's been doing it for a long time. I just wanted to kind of redo it for auditing purposes. It's been going on for decades. So it would just be easier for me to put my fingers on it should I need it. A lot of districts do this every year. I don't think that's necessary, but I did want to do it at least once during my tenure, so I could lay my fingers on it if I needed to. If there's no questions, I would move on to the memorial books. We do have a book. We do have a book called Kindness is My Superpower. And it was donated in memory of Erin Hess, who was the daughter of John Shaw, head custodian here at X One O. Obviously, that was donated since when in the library. Also, I have a donation from Staples of miscellaneous supplies, briaries, markers, pencils, et cetera, to Daniman Elementary. And the Daniman Elementary PTO donated a crumple cart value of fifteen hundred dollars, obviously to Daniman Elementary. That is it in terms of fiscal services unless there's questions from the board.
Does anyone have questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those for fiscal services. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. And if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carrying. Business Services and Legislative Liaison.
Thank you. I'm going to focus just on October fourth report from Facts in the Flash from OSBA. SB one went to the governor's desk for approval. And that requires students entering the ninth grade for the first time on or after July first, twenty twenty-two, to complete at least one-half unit of instruction in financial literacy as an elective or in lieu of, in lieu of a half unit of a mathematics course. HB two ninety would establish an educational savings account or ESA. And this is also known as the Backpack Bill. The Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee accepted a substitute version of SB two-two-nine. And I'm just going to go through highlights of that, but I'll skip over that. If you want more information, let me know. HB one oh five requires public schools to provide age-appropriate instruction in child sexual abuse and sexual violence prevention. The House Labor Committee held a second hearing on HB four thirty-five, which prohibits a district from requiring students or employees to receive a COVID-nineteen vaccine unless the FDA has given final approval. The House Behavioral Health and Recovery Sports Committee heard testimony on HB four twenty-eight, which establishes the adverse childhood experiences study condition. The Ohio Controlling Board, which handles adjustments to the state budget, approved a request of the use of a hundred million dollars from the Elementary and Secondary School Education Relief Fund. Finally, I did send an email to the Chair of the Primary and Secondary Education Committee, Representative Manning, objected to the HB two ninety or Backpack Bill. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of that? Just let me know if you have anything that you'd like me to refer to our representative. Thank you.
Your other items for board approval tonight, we have a number of facility requests. First, with the agency coordination agreement with station break. In the event that they might have some sort of a situation where they can't use their facilities, they would be able to use ours. And then item two is professional services selection rating form. Again, that was a recommendation to approve Vane Howie as architect for professional services. And then we also have an agreement for police special duty officers. We're working a little bit more with Mount Vernon Police Department this year. And so that's just an update relative to that agreement. Those three items for your approval.
Thank you, I would entertain a motion then for those three items. Thank you, Mr. Workman, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann, were there any questions?
No questions, but just a thank you to our officers in uniform and for our officer this evening, thank you for being here and for your service.
And if you'd like to call the roll?
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. And Mr. Thompson, did you want to say anything this evening about?
No, I don't think.
Okay. Then Student Services. Mrs. Rose?
All right, I have three items for approval tonight. The first one on your agenda is the North Central Ohio BSC contract. This is a recurring contract that we've used for a number of years. They help us with the technology and audiology with our very inherent skills. And it's something we cannot get locally. So that's the first one I'd like to approve for. Are we going to keep all three of these together?
Yep.
The second one is a resolution declaring the impracticality of transportation. This is an option that is allowed in the enterprise code to provide payment and load transportation when we have students attending a public non-chartered school out of the district, when it becomes impractical for us to transport them to and from every day. And tied with that is our type four transportation, that's a reimbursement of parents. So once that impracticality is, is declared, then we can approve contracts for those parents to pay them the reimbursement for transporting their children. My question, your approval?
Thank you, I would entertain a motion for those three items.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. Personnel?
Under Personnel, Certified and Licensed Staff, we have no items for information. Number of items for board approval tonight refers to our number of salary change notices. We also have some employment items for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Substitutes that are always of great value and demand. We do have a couple resignations for supplementals. And we do have a couple retirements here that will be coming up at the end of the year, specifically Dina Hui and Walt Lewis, longtime staff members. They'll be missed like all of our retirees are missed. And so hopefully we can celebrate with them as we get more towards the end of the year. And then item D, our number of supplementals. And that concludes this part of the section for your approval.
Would you entertain a motion to approve those items as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman, were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. Classified staff?
Under Classified Staff, we have no items for information tonight. We have a number of items for board approval. The same as the Certified and licensed Staff, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We have a number of substitute positions at employment, a couple resignations, and some supplementals for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, I would entertain a motion for those four items.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, were there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. And at this time, we usually have comments of board members at the beginning, but we are going to do that at the end tonight. And Mr. Workman, would you like to begin?
I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Thompson said as well. You know, this has obviously been a difficult time for us all. And, you know, regardless of decisions we make, there's, there's two sides to each. And we've tried to take everything into consideration, you know, for the well-being of the students, staff. You know, keeping in mind that, you know, we'd like to be able to put that responsibility back with the parents. So, you know, I hope that we can continue in this direction. It looks like it's trending in the right direction. But, you know, I really appreciate everybody's patience. But again, it's, it's been, it's been a tough decision. So hopefully we can continue to move forward in a positive direction.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
As I already referenced, being on the board for 12 years, but I guess I'm kind of hearing a reoccurring theme that led me to run for this board thirteen years ago. And that was the word transparency. It's interesting, people's perception as a board member, as I, I look out and what I was looking at thirteen years ago when I was sitting in one of those chairs. I completely understand the perception that can come about on the whole transparency piece. There's things that we can talk about and things that we can't in, in a format like this. But one of the things that I would just encourage, and I, I wish that others had stayed, because I'd like for them to know that, like the policies, we pulled one today because we have some questions about policy. And I think we need to be more and more concerned about policies and things that are being thrown at us that turn out to be something in our curriculum more than ever. And I trust this board is concerned about that as we go on, whether I'm on this board or not. We have a lot to be concerned about. But I, I, I trust this board and I believe in this board. But the transparency piece too, I think also is, 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 I, I want, now that I know what I've done over 12 years and as I'm exiting, if, if I can help people understand what goes on in a board, how does curriculum get approved? What's the timeframe of it and the, and the, the opportunity for you to look at curriculum? It's there, but people are not aware of it. Policies, policies are introduced 30 days ago. They're here now again for us to, to vote on. I just hope that the community becomes more engaged in understanding how boards work rather than accusing boards of not being transparent. I can speak from experience because I was sitting where you were 13 years ago. I didn't always agree what was being done. And I decided to run for the board. But I'm just probably saying more than I need to. But I just feel led, when we talk about transparency, there's all this piece called education. You should be talking to your board members and asking how things work. Maybe not getting up here to the lectern, which is, is a right to an extent. According to the law, we're doing it as best we can. But the best way to do it is talk to your individual board members and learn. That's the best way to do it. And not, not just assume. Our media is going to want you to think whatever they want you to think, no matter what side of the coin you're on. We need, we need to, to do the best we can to all understand how a school board operates. And I'm sure that every person around this room would take the time to talk to you about that. And that'd be my encouragement to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Regola-Dye?
Thank you. It's an honor to serve on the board, especially with such distinguished people. And I told Mr. Thompson I would miss him desperately because I've learned a lot from him and I continue to learn. This is not something that we just fall into and we know everything. Except for Dr. Bennett, I think she knows quite a bit. But I'd like to thank you all for coming this evening, thanks to those who are viewing at home. I believe it would have been prudent to keep the masking requirement in our school system until after the holiday season. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our entire staff, from aides to bus drivers, our coaches, our custodians, our administrators, our cooks and teachers for somehow navigating this challenging landscape. Thank you. Thank you also to our community for continuing to support our Jack at Family.
Well, that's what I was going to say, but I think it's just been said very well. So I'm just very appreciative of our staff and our teachers, our administrators. And I know that they have a heart for kids and for this community. And they're doing their very best to educate our kids so that they can be successful and do their very best. So I just thank them for that and appreciate your wisdom, Mr. Cedar, and the updates that you provide and the transparency. And Mrs. Getzmann?
Again, I just reiterate what everyone said. I was a strong proponent that we go to the max mask optional. And here I sit with a mask on. I learned today that preschools are exempt from that K-12 mask optional program. And, and I had a situation where I'm employed so that here I am sitting in my mask to protect everyone else. So with that being said, I am very appreciative of the fact and the hard work and the decisions that have gone on to make this mask optional at this point in time. I know Mr. Cedar and the area superintendents. This was not a decision made just alone. It was made in context with all of the other superintendents and our Knox Public Health, as well as the Knox County Career Center. So this was a decision that was not made quickly. But as Mr. Cedar alluded to earlier, many factors went into this decision. And I applaud him, Mr. Cedar and the other superintendents in our county for collaborating on this decision. We have lots of wonderful things going on in our district. And I just pray this does not overshadow and that we continue to see all of the great things that our kids are doing in our schools, our teachers, and everyone that works to make Mount Vernon what it is. So thank you to all of them as well.
And did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Cedar?
No, other than this is not your song, song. So this isn't it, so we still have a couple more months at those conversations as we go. I do have a request for executive session.
And I would entertain a motion then to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye, do I have a second?
A second.
I'm not sure who was first, ladies first. Mrs. Getzmann, second. Okay, and would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Motion carried. I would say yes. And you?